A quorum of the City Council and School Committee being present. I'll call this meeting to order, and I'll read the joint notices. By order of our Honorable Mayor E. Denise Simmons, acting in accordance with Chapter 1, Section 3.2 of the Rules of the School Committee, there will be a roundtable working meeting of the City Council and School Committee on Monday, March 28, 2016, 5:30 and 7:30 p.m. in the media cafeteria, CRLS 459 Broadway Street in Cambridge. The call for the City Council, the City Council Roundtable Working Meeting with the School Committee, no public comment, no votes will be taken. Meeting will not be televised, but please, I am to inform you that this meeting is being videotaped, I believe. Videotaped, audiotaped. People might take pictures, Instagrams, Twitter. Okay. So, I want to thank everyone for being here this afternoon. We're having this meeting for a couple of reasons, but the chief reason is an opportunity for us to launch this term in a way that's collaborative. So, it's really about working together. I've talked to many of you on both sides of the aisle about how do we can foster better working relationships, because even though we have separate jurisdictions, we do have some shared jurisdiction as well. And so, that's why we are launching this, which is going to be one of, I hope, several meetings. And the second part of this meeting, you all have agendas in front of you, we're going to look at some of the things that we want to talk about over the next two years and make every attempt to get to those in an orderly, relaxed, collegial fashion. Before I jump into our agenda, I just want to take an opportunity to acknowledge two people in particular this evening. That's Mr. Richard Rossi and Jeffrey Young, our superintendent. As you know, as you all know, both these gentlemen are going to be leaving us. This is the first time, we've actually kind of been together in a while since they've made those announcements. And I just want to say for the record, in this collaborative meeting of School Committee and City Council, I personally want to thank each of you for your service, and we're going to make you work overtime. But very seriously, we do thank you both for your service. We've had the benefit of having you for a while, working in for our families and our city. And although the time that you have is now, we have a finite date, I still enjoy and look forward to working with you over the next several months, and I think I could speak for my colleagues in saying the same. So, I just wanted to say thank you to each of you. Did you want to say anything before I launch us off? Because if you only get five minutes, you can use your five minutes now.
I'll say less than that. Madam Mayor, I'd just say thank you to everybody for many years, and what I would say, great collaboration and coordination. I really appreciate working with Jeff and Jimmy and Claire and their entire team, and also the respect that's always been shown to us on the city side by the School Committee. I just want to thank you all for that, and to Carolyn, who's been here for many, many years along with us, just to say, really, I think the tasks are difficult at times, but I think Cambridge, you truly enjoy your job, and it's great to be able to be part of making this a better school system and a better city.
Thanks. I'll just give the kind of mirror image of what the manager said. I second his motion. It really has been a pleasure, never easy, but still very important work, and we appreciate the Council and the School Committee's interest in working collaboratively. Certainly, from our perspective at a staff level, you mentioned some folks over there on the School Department. I want to also just single out Gina and Lisa and Ellen, of course, Louie, people I've gotten to know recently well over these years, and we have the highest respect of the scene, and not to mention you both in your previous role, but now especially your roles, manager. I'd like to think that we have found good ways to do right things.
And again, thank you again. So, what's the purpose of this meeting? Again, the purpose of this meeting is for us to, I'm hoping, to forge a collaborative relationship between the School Committee and the City Council, look at in terms of our working meetings, looking for shared agenda items, knowing that we're not going to be able to talk about everything that might come to us or under the sun, but if we can find specific things that we might want to talk to, so I can with the Vice Mayor and the Vice Chair, Vice Mayor of the City Council and Vice Chair of the School Committee, craft an agenda going forward of issues that we can speak on. It's important, and it says Plan E, to understand, our governing document is the Plan E Charter, which gives jurisdictional responsibilities to the City Council and to the School Committee. The City Council is given its power under Mass. General Law 43, subsection 97. The School Committee is given their jurisdictional powers under Chapter 43, subsection 33. And they're very much the same in that the City Council takes care of the issues of the city and the School Committee, the School Committee issues, in terms of policies and procedures. I say that because it's important to note that when it comes to, and this is the important part, the attitude or the item of the budget, the City Council really has no jurisdiction over the School Department's budget, other than to vote it up or down. We can't add, we can't take away. The other side is, the School Committee cannot influence our budget. And I just think it's important that we resonate, remember, to know that, how do I say, how do we work toward a same goal, which is the benefit of the citizens and the children and the families, but also remember that we need to stay in our own lanes. And so, that's a little bit what I want to kind of put out there before both bodies, so as we continue to work together and go over the things that we do share in common, that we are better when we work together. So, having said that, one of the things I thought was very important, let me just start. Does anyone have any questions around that? Okay, thank you. One thing I thought was important that we talk about this evening, and that we have Richie and Lisa and the School Department fiscal people here, and the city's fiscal people here as well, to just to get an update of where we are on the Cambridge Street Upper School in the, what building is it? The King Open Building. We're going to have a presentation by Lisa, Richie, the Superintendent, and Dr. Turk, and then we'll have questions after that, and just in terms of our operational procedure. And everyone is, should feel free to ask a question. Five minutes you're allotted. We'll want to go around, let everyone talk at least once before we go around again. Okay? Any questions? Very good.
So, I'm going to have Lisa, who's had what's going on.
Lisa, you got it.
Okay. So, the Cambridge Street, the King Open Cambridge Street Upper School, antutine conflict, because I think for people, I think most people have been sort of engaged in it one way or another, but not only does it include the two schools, it also includes preschool, community schools, after-school, the Valenti Branch Library, the Gold Star Pool, and also a really significant open space that we're trying to look at what the relationship is between that. We're just completing the feasibility study, and as a part of that feasibility study, we're also looking at whether the School Administration Building could fit in that project. And, you know, I think from a spatial perspective and everything, it looks like the School Administration project does work well there. It is about a 20,000-square-foot facility. It would be a separate building with a separate entrance, or sort of entering off of Berkshire Street. Before we sort of make the final sort of recommendation and determination on that, I think we are still trying to finalize some of what we think are the parking implications on street. It does look like it works. I think that's mostly what we wanted to sort of talk about today, is that, and it isn't an additional cost, even though the additional cost, I think, is, seems reasonable. The School Administration with an additional 20 parking spaces, because all the parking spaces would be below ground, is about an additional $10 million, which really is, for a 20,000-square-foot facility, I think is probably a pretty reasonable cost when you think about an alternative of having to acquire land and having to build on that. I should say, just, I think, consistent with the Net Zero Plan that the City Council adopted this year, we are building this building as a Net Zero Building, which really has very significant implications for how we are looking at the building and how we're designing the building. It is a building that will be sourced by geothermal wells exclusively. There'll be no carbon, there'll be no oil or gas that are going, that's going into the building, PV arrays, and an assortment of other sustainability features. And also, I guess I would say is that the square, originally, we were feeling the building would be around 220,000 square feet. We're now, if we include the School Administration Building, at a 266,000-square-foot facility. Again, that includes about 20,000 square feet from the School Administration Building, and the remainder are increases. You know, some, we're adding another preschool, there's some additional space for the Human Service Programs, a little bit more space for the pool, for the Valenti Library. I should say, the voting is now going to take place in the library and not in the school, so I think that will be included in the public yet from the school perspective. And then also, for the school facility, I think most of the increased space is because of additional special education classrooms and the Ola program. So, I think I'll leave it at that, and if there's other questions that people have.
Okay. So, the floor is open for folks to ask any questions that they may have.
The only thing I would add, Madam Mayor, so this will be fully supported by DEP, and it is part of our DEP program that we have in our funding cap.
Mr. Superintendent, do you want to add anything to that?
Just operationally, I'll add, I'll ask Mr. Maloney if he wants to weigh in a little bit here. But I just want to note that, again, thanks to the support of the city, we were able to move out of that building, right, of two faculties at the King Open, as well as the Cambridge Street Upper, to their various swing spaces as this project gets underway. I want to just take a minute here in front of this group to acknowledge the work, not just Mr. Maloney and his team to actually execute that, but of the really goodwill and cooperation and patience and great spirits of the school staff in both of those buildings, as well as the families, many of whom, on the days that Mr. Maloney and I went to visit, you could see parents there in the schools, either providing food or just cheering people on as they were packing and unpacking crates. Very powerful community-building exercise. Although that wasn't part of the design, it turned out to be one of the high points from my perspective. I don't know if Mr. Maloney would like to add anything to that.
Jimmy, want to add?
I would say that I think it's important for everybody to recognize that the driver of the program, the feasibility piece, are the teachers of the school. Virtually every teacher at the King Open and at the Cambridge Street, as were the teachers coming together for the current King, part of that building, have been involved in hundreds of hours of input meetings with the architects, and they are certainly the people who will be there the most, and it's their thoughts that matter the most to us in the feasibility piece of this project.
Thanks, Jim. Okay. So, Leland and Dennis?
Really quickly, I'd just say I'm very pleased with the vision for the school, but I've been asking to incorporate the administration into the school. I'm glad to see that. I think I'm very happy also about the idea of doing more early ed within the school. That's great. I think just, I'm very, and that's zero building, we're all very happy. I think just to the Chair and to the Vice Mayor and the Co-Chair about, to talk about in the future, I think we're, we have a very ambitious school building plan. You know, we're staring down the gun, the barrel of a very real political threat that could lead to an economic contraction with the election of Trump. And quite seriously, so if there is an economic contraction, I want to make sure that we don't wind up seeing ourselves in a position where we're over-leveraged and unable to put to the schools the kind of resources that we're accustomed to and would like to do so in the quarter four. So, just like some scenario or sensitivity analysis around how the capital budget and what we're anticipating for this school and the schools down the road, could, how that could impact the operational budget of the city if there is, you know, worst comes to worst. So, that's, I think, just something for, probably, expanded discussion in the future.
Okay. Thank you. I meant to ask this, we have new members on the School Committee and the City Council, and is everyone familiar with everybody on the, from the administrative sides of the aisle? No?
Jan DeBro, if anyone.
So, I know people hate to do this, but if we just said who we were, and if you're a city person or a School Department person, it might be helpful, so. And then we'll come back to you, Dennis, right after. But you are, who are you?
I'm still Dennis Carlon, and a City Council.
Fred Fantini, School Committee.
Jan DeBro, City Council.
Emily Dextrow, School Committee.
Craig Keller, City Council.
Kathleen Keller, School Committee.
Ellen Salmonoff, I think I might be School Department, but I'm actually City.
Rich Rossi, City Manager.
Lisa Peterson, Deputy City Manager.
Louis Deepisquale, City Mayor of Finance.
Gina Franconi, Budget Director.
Jeff Young, Superintendent.
Claire Spinner, CEO of the School Department.
Richard Harding, School Committee.
Patty Nolan, School Committee.
Mark McGovern, City Council.
I thought you were the Vice Mayor.
I'm the Vice Mayor, yes.
Paula Crane, Deputy City Clerk.
Donna Lopez, City Clerk.
Judy Martin, Executive Secretary of the School Committee.
Denise Simmons, Mayor, and then?
Carolyn Turk, Deputy Superintendent of the School.
Jim Maloney, City Manager.
Nancy Chou, City Mother.
Tom Jenny, Thorick, City Manager of the School.
Snow Wilder, Mayor, for Councilor of California.
Yolfer, Chief Staff of the City.
David Meyer, City Councilor.
Sandra Manuel, City Council Office.
Leland Chong, City Person, but September I will be a school person.
Okay.
My daughter's going to school in September.
So, now, Dennis, you have the floor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor, come on. Just a few, a quick question. So, with 266,000 square feet, I heard that, and do I remember, it's about 100 parking spaces?
Yeah, I didn't mention, we're, if we include an allocation of 20 spaces for the School Administration, it would be 105 underground spaces. And a huge benefit of that, from a community perspective, is putting the surface lots underground, I just want to say, is that we can add over an acre of open space there, which is phenomenal for the community. You know, it creates a little bit more of a parking challenge, but you kind of figure it out.
If we were to add more underground parking, it's about $70,000 space.
That's not as high normally, because you're already down there.
And there is room.
And the total cost, did you?
I didn't say that here. Right now, total, what we're looking at, if we include School Administration, and it would be, can't, is more than $10 million of it. We've got 157.
157.
157, which, yeah.
So, that's in the ballpark of 450, 465.
So, 500 square feet.
Okay, I was getting up there.
You were getting there, yeah.
But I didn't want to broach that number. And that seems, I don't know, that seems comparable in this day and age.
So, this isn't just a school, right? This is a library and a pool.
High end, high net zero.
And his system would mark Luther King, if that was it.
It is, okay. And the Net Zero aspect of, I mean, you know I'm a big Net Zero fan, but I don't believe, as I mentioned to you the other day, we have to be 100% on-site. So, the Net Zero.
We're aiming for that.
Yeah, I know you are, but if we're losing other opportunities, I question it, because there's other ways to get to Net Zero, not on-site. Do we have an idea of what the Net Zero impact is?
The cost, yeah. Yeah, the cost is, if we're talking about like the geothermal wells, the PV systems and all that, it's about 12 million.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very.
If you kept the net out, if it wasn't Net Zero, you'd have more, you know, natural gas and boiler and all that, so, still.
Okay. I won't go on. Okay. Thank you.
Patty?
Thanks. Couple of questions. One, if maybe more Jeff could explain, how we're ensuring flexibility in programming, given that our enrollment has been changing over time, we have much larger first grades, it may be that eventually we're going to have to do, we've talked about this, the some reconfiguration at our middle-grade level, so this, and as I understand it, this is the only site with such flexibility in terms of building, of all the ones that we're considering, because of the open space and the zoning. So, I'm, I know the program has been, teachers have been involved, but I think if we could hear a little bit more about how we're ensuring that we are building flexibility into this building here, both for early education, but also in case we need additional upper school classrooms or others, because I know that was seen as important for this particular site, because this is one that is underbuilt, it's the only one of all of our buildings, our school buildings at least, that are underbuilt vis-à-vis zoning.
Yeah. I think that has been something that's been important to Mr. Maloney. He's certainly talked about flexibility, so I don't know if you want to talk about it in terms of having ended most of those 60-plus meetings.
So, there's lots of flexibility. Our very first meeting on the school side with the architects, well over a year ago now, the one thing we asked them, or was the same thing we asked the architects at the King Building, that the building be built flexible enough so that if a future School Committee or City Council wanted to make changes in the structures, that was possible. I think it's, within reason, we've asked for as much additional space as we want to get, and as the City Manager already said, we're already at two something with square footage, and there's only, you know, so much square footage you can get at any one building. So, the building is being designed from, at our request now, in a city's agreement, so that it has flexibility for future use, if a time or 10 years down the road, it was a dark. That said, there's not seven or eight classrooms that are being built just to be built in the bank in case. We have some other thoughts that the City Manager and Lisa and I have had discussions about, as we move forward to other buildings that are in the queue, so to speak, should we get them with the economy, that would give us some flexibility.
Yeah, and I think that's a, if we get to them, I think we all, I know we all want to, and I think it's really important we make sure that this project doesn't end the funding for school projects, because we have not just other school buildings that might be, require totally redoing, like the current Vassal Lane structure, but we actually have a number of other school buildings that are in desperate need, of more than that 10 to $20 million overhaul, that are really behind code, they're behind a lot of different educational, we're not able to provide the educational programming, the same level of student programming that I think we'd like to. So, I know you're aware of that, I know we're all aware of that, we just want to make sure it's something we can continue to afford, given that this project is taking. I want to follow up on the Net Zero. I'm, as all of us are, and I've championed it for years, the current King Building had a goal of Net Zero, and when I was there, it's about 43% is being produced on-site, and yet, one of the things that we talked about is that we're going to learn from that, is the expectation that maybe we'll get to more like the 60% or 70% shooting that zero on this project. I know we're aiming for 100, but, so we think we might be able to get there, because that's what.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, the question is, honestly, when we're talking about what Councilor Carlon was talking about, we're also working towards getting to 100% renewable energy from our electrical supply. So, you know, if we say that's three years out, or maybe four years out, you know, that's going to be, this, you're going to have electricity that's going to be sourcing the building. So, if we get to 80% PV coverage on the building, we'll get to 100% through the renewable energy, and I think it's going to be electrical. So, that's what we are looking at all that.
That's great.
Yeah, remember too, the King School, I'm talking about, pretty much a straight-up building, all the land.
It didn't have as much space. It had more constraints on the site, right.
I mean, just two other things. So, over above this, and the fact that we are committed to other schools in our capital plan for the out-years, you know, we, I think, have learned in the last year, there is a real concern over security in general in all our schools and city buildings, and we're working on a plan now to make together some money, which really hasn't shown up anywhere. But that could be, you know, as much as $8, $10 million, all said and done, that we will have to somehow put together. I think the other thing is, as we go from one new school to the next, I think we learn a lot about what some of the issues are, and it really begs for us to continue, I think, our strong collaboration and communication, so that we work out all these growing pains in all these buildings, and just to make sure that, so I think if the Superintendent and the City Manager are on the same page, and then the program leaders are on the same page, and the teachers and the principals, et cetera, I think that will be a better process for the future, and that's something we've been trying to work on now to get better at it as we move to these new schools.
And when you say you're for the future building projects, I know you're talking about new schools, but are, we haven't talked specifically about the need for existing schools to be renovated and, or is that?
We've had discussions.
Okay, so that's on the table, and that's something, I mean, I think we have to start a little more detail.
So, we don't just do the new schools, right? If you look at the capital budget, you'll see allocations for boilers, for roofs, for windows, et cetera. So, we're trying to keep up with that, too.
We need to update those.
But I would say it's quite, it is quite an aggressive schedule that we all need to pay attention to and keep our eyes on.
Thanks.
Because there is this other side of the world, it's called the city side, right?
Yes.
They have a few needs.
We're very grateful.
Fred knows that.
Anything else? No, thank you. Ms. Keller? Kathleen?
I have different questions. We pass the School Committee a policy regarding transgender students and families who are transgender members. So, I was wondering, in the plans created around the building, whether or not we have gender-neutral or gender-free facilities, or any plan?
Yes, we should, we do have a gender-neutral bathroom policy, and there will be gender-neutral bathrooms. I will need to confirm for you, we're not at that level of detail. Is it just in the sort of administrative incentive areas, or is it through the class, through the school? So, I need to sort of confirm. I'm not exactly sure in my head if it's, we are exactly where located. Okay, yeah, but it's an important question.
Other questions? Jan?
Just going back, sort of to, I guess, what Patty was talking about with capacity, what, how many students are we building this building for that are currently involved in these two programs, and how additional students could they absorb, and then what is the, what is the cost per student apart from the library and the pool and the other, just to, does that mean?
So, so.
So, Jim, if you stand up, it's a little better to hear you.
So, the building, the building has several components. There is capacity, there's enrollment, and enrollment and capacity are two very different things, and there's a little bit of growth from there. Right now, the two schools combined probably have an enrollment of about 600 students. I'm going to give you a round number, but I don't have the numbers right off the top of my head. But some classrooms, my, classrooms are built for 25, which is our contractual capacity, and 20 at the kindergarten level, and if there's only 20 kids in there, so you have your capacity, you have your enrollment numbers. Then what, to, I think, Mr. Nolan's earlier question, what opportunities are there for growth there? We, again, it's a site as large as it is, we can't build all of our, as much as we might all want to build all of our potential growth on one site, that's not the best for that site, that's not the best for the school, and it's probably not the best for the kids. There is a little bit of growth in there for, at the lower level, because as Mr. Nolan mentioned, it's her concern at the middle school level, upper school. We're actually facing the potential of a serious squeeze at the middle school side in this coming September. But also, we're very squeezed at the K to 5 level, particularly at the K to 3 level. So, we've included at least one more classroom in there, and we've begun discussions, as I said earlier, about other ways that we could alleviate some of our space crunches that we're facing right now.
And just as a follow-up, it's being designed as sort of two separate.
Two completely separate, one building with this, it's, again, one building with separate areas, as much standalone as possible, but with the reality that principals like a little bit of interaction between the two structures, the grades of kids, and also some common facilities like cafeterias and the media box area, the libraries.
Right. Thank you. We have a community meeting on March 31st in the Frizzoli Youth Center at night, and we'll be going through, I think, for the first time, a little bit more detail about some of these.
What's the date of that, again?
31st.
31st.
Thursday.
This Thursday, okay. Other questions or comments?
Just a quick observation, I think the enrollment issue is a key issue. In the town next door, the town of Arlington, they just finished building a new building, and they found out that they're already shot on enrollment, and had to bring in modulars to kind of support the school. So, I just say that as a way that, it's a good thing to keep your eye on, and that wasn't even a five-year projection, that was right after they finished building it, they needed modulars, so, so it's something to, something to take into account. And don't tell anybody I mentioned.
Who's running that show over there, Fred?
Well, that's, probably has a lot to do with it, Mark, you're right.
Other discussion? Jim, what do you anticipate going out five years? What does our enrollment look like?
Actually, I think the exact numbers Claire has, and she's looking up right now, and Patty has as well.
You want to?
So, we're looking at enrollment growth by 2020 of about another, I'll say, 400 students from 66, 78 in the current year. I'll say four hundred students, from sixty-six, seventy-eight in the current year, excuse me, from sixty-seven, seventy-five in the current year, to seventy-one, forty-nine, five years ago.
And that's mostly K to five.
I'm sorry?
And that's mostly K to five, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah. I mean, as you know, we've experienced a lot of growth here, but the lower grades, recent, our, our kindergarten lottery that was just held a couple of weeks ago, had six hundred and three registrants, which was the most in the last fifteen or twenty years, except for one year, which was two years ago. So, the growth is really coming from the bottom up.
And what about our middle school? Is that numbers grow, are those numbers growing as well, or is this, where are you seeing the growth?
We're seeing the growth at, the, the primary growth at two levels, in the K to three area, and historically, in the last few years, at the high schools. The middle schools haven't shown a lot of growth, it's been a little up, there's been no real statistically significant change either way in the middle schools, it's been fairly stable, a little up, a little down, most a little down. What we're looking at, though, is, and what we don't know, is as that enrollment that's grown so much at the K one, two, three level-
Right.
-that I think we sold it a while ago, that's starting to put pressure on our upper schools, particularly right now, next year's sixth grade is something that Claire and I have been working with a family resource center about right now, because we, we are a little concerned with that.
Thank you. Mr. Harding?
Yeah, just, just quickly, just for the city council to sort of understand, so, one of our sort of bigger schools, the Grand Park's about three sixty-two, so four hundred students is almost like a whole nother school in our world. So, just to help the council members understand the, you know, in real time what it looks like, it looks like almost if we were to put another school online, the amount of kids that Mr. Nolan just projected, just to kind of help my colleagues understand that if they didn't already.
And if I could just add to-
Jim?
Mr. Harding's, that's on top of over seven hundred new students in the last eight or, eight or so years.
Right.
So, combined, we're talking about, now, we had some capacity to absorb that, obviously.
Mm-hmm.
But we also closed two buildings twelve years ago, so our ability to continue to absorb that is all but gone.
Over how many years?
Twelve years ago.
Twelve years.
Twelve years ago.
Two thousand and two.
And three.
Three.
You don't remember that?
Yeah. Mark?
Thank you, and this is something that, that Craig talks about, but he's eating a piece of pizza over there, so I'm gonna, I'll jump in. In your projections for enrollment, are you, we don't really, we don't really fully understand what the new housing that we're building here, and we're, you know, we'll be building five thousand units of, of new housing in, you know, in the upcoming years, and granted, most of that is not going to be families necessarily, but even a two-bedroom could have one or two, you know, two children, and, and as Mr. Harding said, you know, even, even four hundred kids out of those five thousand, you're talking about a new school. So, have you, do you take into account what the potential growth would be in terms of new housing, or are you just looking at what, what the birth records are and where those kids will, will be five years out?
Mostly it's just historical trends. I think one of the issues with housing that, that we've had some discussions with is the location of housing. The housing that's, that's going in is sort of the periphery of the city. I'll be honest with you, it's expensive to go get small numbers of kids. I mean, you couldn't imagine going out to L O A to get a handful of children at rush hour. We get paramount complaints from, from parents about that, and as well as Deep East Cambridge at the North Point. So, those areas, if you look at our transportation, they've been, had an impact, small numbers of children in more isolated areas to get to.
But that's where it is going, right? So, that we're going to have to figure out how to manage that, and, and some, you know, add those, what we, what we might be able to predict for, for kids who might, those have to be factored into the number somewhere.
Yeah, although the more kids that are there, the unit cost is going to decrease. I mean, if we're, if we're chasing ten to fifteen kids right now, maybe on the other side, we're chasing a hundred kids. At space issues, from a transportation standpoint-
Right, transportation, it helps, but classroom size, you're going to end up, you could end up with a lot more kids.
I want to welcome school committee member, Monika Bowman, councillor Nadine Mazin, and councillor Tim Toomey. Do any of you want to add to this discussion at all? That's it? Yeah, go ahead. This is, I want, this is really open the floor and just, whatever is on your mind, it's a good time to get it out.
Well, two things. One is, I think we learned at Putnam Avenue, how well architects can break up the massing to make a large building feel more comfortable on the street and with its neighbors, and I give the city and the school department and the leadership a lot of credit. And the beauty of the diagram that Lisa shared with us on the new program on Cambridge Street is the same possibilities there, and I'm assuming that's a goal, to make the facades fit in as much as possible, and on the crescent on Cambridge Street with the different uses you have, it's ideal for that, and it really becomes a village center. And I think on Putnam, too, it feels more like that, and I, I think that is tremendous. That's exactly the way to go. As far as new growth that councillor vice mayor brought up, I hope in Airway, where there's a capacity of three thousand more people living, and there might be a commuter rail, that the city and its plans look at a school site in the middle of that, because, for two reasons. One is the future need, and all these new buildings that don't have families in it, in twenty years, that'll be quite different. That's when buildings become more affordable. So, there will be families in even the new buildings eventually, but we need a communal center in Airway, and the school, to me, is the basis, the beginning basis of, of that, when you have three thousand people living there, fairly isolated, given the state roads around it. So, I hope in the long-term plan, the envision plan and the school plan, that we do look at that, because it's, it's essential. North Point, at least, is near East Cambridge, although one can make an argument, North Point should have a small school as well. Thanks, thank you.
It's going to be, it almost feels like a small city unto itself. I know we've talked a lot about how do we make North Point feel more part of East Cambridge, and I just don't know, I don't see how that happens. It feels very isolated, it feels very off to itself as other, what do we have coming in there? We have a restaurant, someone talks about-
A ton of retail coming in there.
Retail, it'll be interesting to see five years from now, what that really looks like, you know, and what kind of impact that has on the eastern part of the city. Just curious, are the timeline, with the King School, that little faux pas, we'll call it, that we had, are we-
Fire par.
Fire par, right. Are we pretty much still on schedule with our overall plan? When do we see the Cambridge Street building being finished, and given no more fire pars or anything like that?
So, our original plan was to open in September of nineteen, that's still out, so we were able to make that.
Okay. I have to tell you, I, I'm pleased about the idea of the administrate, the administration building going there. I remember a thousand years ago, back when Dave and I were young and thin, and on the school committee, we talked about it then, you know, where, where is a place to put the administration building? So, I'm, I'm actually very, very pleased to see it, it go in there. It'll be interesting what happens to the building after that, but I'm, I'm just pleased, so I'm glad you're moving forward with that. Let's, can we go back to the King School for a moment?
Just another one point, just-
Yeah.
I know the committee still has some concerns, I know there's nothing being, and people are still talking about that, so I wouldn't say it's a-
A done deal?
I'm sure it probably will end up there.
Oh, okay.
And I always caution when that happens, that that building now is opened up for a charter school, they practice again on the other level.
Can I add one point today?
Sure, sure.
And you have heard me say this, Mr. Manager, but it's, I think what Tim just said is looking forward, not waiting until that building is vacant to figure out what to do with it, but having some thought ahead of time, because I don't think any of us want to see another charter school in that, in that site. And I think that what we also don't want is us to leave and leave the neighborhood in a lurch, and I think there is probably a good use for that building with some kind of housing situation that has low impact on the neighborhood, that the city could look to enter into an agreement with the, the parish there, and be able to look at some kind of ninety-nine year lease, like the Smithsonian Building up at, at St. Peter's Church. Right, right.
Did you want to respond at all, Richard?
No, I mean, just that, yeah, we, you know, I think once we know what the plan is here, that would be the next thing we would want to talk to them about.
Well, that's, that's actually where I was going, I mean, I, when I think about the money that we're spending on that facility, and because the facility needs so much work, that's why I say I'm happy to see it go, but the other part of that was, you know, and Tim, you can talk more to, what's, what's going to be any results around charters, I don't know.
We passed it to move them out ten years ago, because they're operating at a loss. That could have been converted into like a C I C, or a potential, I know charter school around, I mean, they were looking for digital space, and they come in and they do everything, so-
Right.
He's lost much over the years, and I told him ten years ago to move them out, move them to a location, because it was a loss for them, and they've lost all their, so, but this is the reality now, and there's, there's some change there in administrative, so I think things will probably move along, but all I just say is caution to the wind, be prepared for that space, and to be, could be reconverted very simply.
And I don't disagree, but I think what David's saying is, let's not wait until the building's like, we're on the doorstep of moving out, and then we say, oh, what do we do?
It's the manager and Lisa, so it's, it's on our, everyone's radar screen.
I mean, I think what councillor Toomey was saying a while ago was, we should all know this is not a done deal, this is the plan, right?
Right, this-
So, until it's a done deal, I don't want to start, start a line of thinking on that other building, because we still need that other building.
Well, I, I want us to have, the whole purpose of the conversation is so we can be proactive, as opposed to reactive, you know, figuring out, if, if that, if it does go forward, and you'll let us know relatively, you know, as soon in the process as possible, then we can know, the council and the school committee, what's the next step? What do we do to not leave it for a, a use that we may not favor? So, that's it. Ms. Bowman, Monika.
I, I know this is not the time to go into a deep conversation around what we do with that building, but I would be remiss if I didn't say that I think it would be really important to see how we leverage it for our own school system. We're having these conversations about early childhood education, and if a building come online for us, that it, I feel like it's an opportunity to really move that conversation forward, so I did not want to miss the opportunity to say that.
And it's important to say that, because we could, and Mark can attest this, we have had numerous conversations around early childhood and early childhood center, which is still in the iCloud, I guess, you know, we have never been able to figure out a place to go. So, I guess, like you can hear, we really, if there's a way that we can continue to utilize it to, that's, that's in a progressive, proactive, smart way for us to use before it gets, goes back and gets used by someone else, we certainly-
Yeah, I mean, it's a fair thing to say, any reuse of that building is going to require major renovations.
That we know.
That is not going to be a simple building to deal with, particularly around the usage of people and children and all, that would be very challenging. I mean, the conversation is something we should add.
Yes, thank you. Pat?
I just want to add, I echo, I think all of our dream would be that could be used for early ed, but also, we don't own it, we don't know what limits there are on the archdiocese. It will be hugely expensive to renovate, but more importantly, I, where I sit, I do worry about the city, but it is a decade that we have subjected our administration to completely unhealthy conditions in that building. It is, I, I know you all share that, I'm just reminding us all why we're thrilled that we're finally thinking, we had thought it might be at the, what is now the L S K Wolf Center. I mean, we've been trying for a while, the school committee has passed, what, when you were there, two or three resolutions, that we don't want to sign another contract, but we can't leave them on the street. So, I'm thrilled, I'm hopeful that they will have new space, if it could have been a renovated building there, but it is so unhealthy, it's, you know, I'm just worried about those paint chips falling down, and Jeff and Jim and everybody here, we're in that place every day. I, I think we're all a little behind in terms of offering them a healthier space.
Richard?
Yeah, no, Patty, Monika, I think they caught it, I mean, for me, I think, you know, the ten-year-old conversation, whatever happens after we get out of there, we can advocate or not for that, I'm not as concerned about that. I know that, and I wasn't always convinced this way, that, you know, it's probably an act of treason that we have a staff in that building, with, you know, there's little rooms, there's back tracked doors, I mean, it's insane, quite frankly, that they're in there. So, for me, I think we should move forward with the intention, I don't know what the hold should, you know, could be, but, but the intention of moving them out, and then whatever happens, I mean, I'm, you know, I, I want to hear more about this charter school threat, and I don't, I don't, it's new to me, but I'm sure it's there, but I think we should try to move forward and put our best foot forward to have this sort of new educational complex service as we need it to serve us. I'm much more concerned, however, with the enrollment trends and, and, you know, sort of building out, where, where by the time we land there, it's already too small for the capacity if the trends continue going. I'm much more concerned with that, and I think that councillor Carlon's sort of questions about sort of North Point and Airway are valid. I mean, I think in North Point, I mean, they may have enough people to have a new zip code, right?
Absolutely.
So, I mean, it's a whole nother conundrum that, quite frankly, it, you know, you know, you think ten years out, there's a different issue, twelve years out, there's more issues. I think we should try to have, so that the folks can do their jobs, some kind of real focus on, in a real time, sort of forecast, so that-
As I say, forecast, yeah.
-building done. I just would also note that, you know, to the, whoever mentioned about the usage, you know, we have a high school extension program that's mixed in with another school, the Longfellow School, the old Longfellow, I guess, we closed that twelve years ago, but that facility is going to be online at some point, so maybe this is a conversation about kind of the now in this project, and, you know, next project out, but a longer, long-term facilities thing, because if you think about the, the Longfellow building as it sits, I mean, that's an interesting place to have a facility that will be online once we kind of figure out and move all the kids as a sort of swing space over the years of construction. Just some thoughts for the group.
Good point. Ms. Dexter, Emily, did you want to say anything?
No, I just don't think about the Longfellow, I mentioned about the Longfellow.
Okay, then.
In January, or, not by Friday, you know, you have an excellent-
Well, I wanted to ask, Nadine, did you want to say, you hadn't had?
All set, thank you.
I'm going to write this down.
Give them time, give them time.
It's warming up, boy.
So, who over here?
Oh, I was just going to say that in North Point, the sort of anchor tenant at the moment is E F Education, and then I hear they're going to be building a third building there, so they will soon have three buildings in North Point, and they're a global education company, so maybe there's something they'd like to do, or help us do around education.
Build a school?
Work it, Freddie.
His connections.
That's not A F, is it? It's E F.
Right, right, it's E F.
Madam, may I, I just, on the, on the archdiocese building, I just want to say that, you know, they treated the school system really well.
Yeah.
You know, in the midst of knowing, in the midst of knowing that, that we were, that administration building was going to be moving, they renegotiated a three-year lease with us, and that was a perfect opportunity to really stick it to the school department and the city, and they chose not to. And so, I think, I think they proved to be a good partner with us, and I just want to make sure that, that's my feeling on that.
When's that lease up?
Jim, when's the lease?
The lease is up, we just renewed it for four years.
Four years.
It's up a year after nineteen.
A year after the Cambridge Street project.
So, the school would be finished before the lease was up?
Well, but it also, but it, it, the reason we put an extra year in there was, you know,
you know, the goal, I would go and guess, and the city manager's construction, will be a little at the school for us, so if there's any slips there, we'll be on, we-
You know, just a curiosity, it wasn't a criticism at all, just, that's probably smart thinking on, on your part.
It will take some time for you to move and all that stuff.
Mm-hmm, very good. Emily? I thought you had something about the Longfellow you wanted to ask.
No, no, I was just asking, I was asking the same question.
Okay. Can we go back to, just for a moment, Ms. Kelly, Kathleen has mentioned gender neutral bathrooms going forward, so that we have this building finished, is there gender neutral bathrooms in it?
In the King-
King, no.
On the M L King, junior.
So, we have, at, at any school at any given time, we have instances where we need gender neutral bathrooms from, frankly, the very early grades onto the high school.
Mm-hmm.
And we work with the principals and the facility department to make sure that those accommodations are made so that the rights of the children are always respected.
What does that mean?
What does that mean?
I mean, so in other words, when I say gender neutral bathroom, I guess I'm thinking about a bathroom that says lavatory and anyone can go in it.
That's right.
In a, in a accessible spot, not, you know, around the corner down the hall, but, you know, sort of an inaccessible spot.
I mean, if you're saying, if you're saying, is every bathroom gender neutral, the answer is no.
No, no, I don't, but are there gender neut, is there a gender neutral bathroom that's gender neutral all the time, not swing space gender neutral, but truly gender neutral?
Yes, yes, Karen's saying yes, yes, I'll go with yes.
You'll go with yes, ooh, I don't know about that. Okay, okay, Kathleen.
The idea is to create a space. I just wanted to add, Mr. what you were saying, to create a space that a transgender child or a transgender, transgender member of a child's family would feel safe using, which means it is a neutral, neutral space.
Right, right.
It's not identified in any way as a by gender.
It's like you want to set a.
So let's connect to go back, right.
It's like, it's like the, you know.
See, I think like three forty four Broadway, I, I look at those as gender neutral bathrooms, doesn't, you know, it doesn't, I don't know what it says actually, but I know it doesn't say male, female.
It says toilet.
Toilet, right, so you know, you, you get it, it's, you know, anyone can use it, and, you know, we, we, we are progressive, we're proactive, we're separate going to have it, but, so if we're going to do that, we really have to do it in a way that, again, you don't have to go around the corner where there ain't no light to get to it.
Right.
That's what I mean.
It's to be completely supportive.
Right, exactly.
Really quickly, Madam Mayor, though, can I just add something, so if, our, you know, he's one of the smartest guys I know on the school side, but he doesn't really know, right? No, I'm just kidding, but is there a way that we have these names so that the kids know, because if, you know, Jim Maloney's saying, then what is the fourth grader saying at the school? And I, and I'm just being funny with Jim, but maybe some of this, and I know you mentioned three forty four, is about kind of how the new way of sort of naming the facilities or, you know, on the door so that people understand what's trying to be achieved.
Right, it could be man, it could be lavatory, it could be water closet.
But I was in the building and I didn't see this transgender bathroom.
I didn't need, that's why I'm asking.
It wouldn't be called that, and the teachers all got, there was a training also that went in the process of the policy that was passed, to help teachers in terms of making sure that they said things in ways that would feel supportive of the students and their families. So the students know where those are.
We're guessing, we don't know that for, for fact, right?
We know it, I know it for a fact.
Okay, so at the King, tell me, so at the King, I'd be calling someone on Hay Street now that goes there and they're going to say, I can say, you have a gender neutral bathroom, and they're going to say, yes, we know this fact. I, I only caution you to say that, that I don't know that people are understanding this at the level that we understand it.
I think, I would say that I know the students and the families.
Some of them.
The students and the families who this is most, would be the greatest concern for, I'm trying to be very careful with my language, okay? Would be aware of where those facilities.
What I'm saying is that, in order for this to really work, forget about who's most sensitive to it, it has to be common knowledge amongst everybody to understand this, that's all I'm saying, so maybe this is an issue of having, reinforcing this on our side of the schools, and then thinking forward about when we build new buildings and how we do this. I, I was in the building, I didn't know, and I'm a little over the fourth grade, and so we have to have a better understanding globally about how we should make sure that everybody knows this, that's all I would say.
We can be more explicit, I mean, I, I've asked this question several times and been told, yes, it does exist, but we can be more explicit, so it's more widely known and less of a guess.
And, and we have to be intentional and deliberate about it as well, it's not even about being explicit, you know, if we're, if we're saying we have a policy and we have a procedure, we have a policy that we're going to have gender neutral bathrooms, then let's be very clear about it, and you don't have to look for it and figure it out and, you know, whisper behind someone's, you should be, if you're a transgender man or woman, you should be able, feel comfortable to go into that facility, you know, and not worry about it, and, and that's what's good about it, is that we say we're going to do it, so we just have to be better at doing it.
Fair enough.
Leland.
I was just going to say, I think, so on this topic, I was just going to say, I don't know that you necessarily want like a, like this is your bathroom, you know, I think it's like, I must think a little bit stimulating, but like if you look at the way Google does their bathrooms, like, so they're all gender neutral, but they're all the same bathroom, and they have, like, they have doors on stalls, that everyone's going into the same bathroom, but it, you know, it's, there's no guy or girl doors, and it's at the, the new Google complex over the, the parking structure, but this, a process question to you, Mayor, I guess on other things, when is the appropriate time to bring up other things that we'd like to talk about in the future or?
Right, I mean, we're going to end this conversation shortly, we have another hour, and I was going to leave that other hour to just going of what, that this is, what do we as a joint elected body want to speak to, so we have about.
Should I start on that or?
One moment, well, let me just, I, let me just say this, and if no one else wants, we can move on to the next topics, so just to bring you guys back, parking seems to be at least a nightmare at the King School, and, but it sounds like you, in, in the case of the King Open, it looks like you've taken care of it, I hope we're moving someplace around taking care of it for the King School, because that is a nightmare that doesn't seem to want to go away, particularly on McGee Street, so I just, you know, as we go forward, all the schools, it sounds like you've taken care of it, well, on the King Open, with the underground.
It's still a work in progress, we're trying to take care of it, I want to be clear.
Okay, well, the, the King is there, and it, it's a debacle, I just hope that we can, people are just really, and I'm sure some of you have gotten phone calls or emails about people's cars being hit or the buses not being able to navigate McGee Street, so it's really something, when you talk about, we've learned some things, I hope that we've learned that parking is, is a huge thing, and the only other two things I would say about going forward to the King Open building, I, I thought we had a wonderful open house at the ML King Junior School, but I, I think we could have been better at including the community, we didn't, I don't think we acknowledged the community that was, from the historical perspective, I mean, I mentioned in my opening remarks, like talking about the Grams and the, I can't even remember the names now, Richard, you can help me.
The Phillips, the.
Right, all those folks that have been there that, you know, they're still, some of them are a little not, not happy about the school, and that's some, some other stuff that we can talk about another time, I just want us to be respectful to the communities, just to remember who was there first, or there before, not first so much, but who was there before, and how do we honor and pay attention to that, I, I think it goes a long way with building, with community building, I'm looking at you, Richard, but I mean, for all of us, you just have to be more thoughtful about remembering that before was this brand new building that may have, the administration building may not, but it's going to be this wonderful educational community complex, we remember the, the Valenti Library before it was new, and the Bachi Court that was there, and the Ola program, and before it was the Ola, and what was it, the Fitzgerald, was it the Fitzgerald? No, what was it?
Harrington.
The, the, you know, the Harrington School, it needs to be some testimony to that, you know, I think we can still capture that at the Elking Junior School, but just going forward, just, there's got to be a way to remember or acknowledge that community. The other thing was just the schools being a shared school and not belonging just to the school department, going in and when it's finished, that, you know, I know it's a brand new building and I want it, and it's mine, it's my cafeteria, it's my gym, and it's my this, and I just want us to make sure that the, the school is thought of as a shared facility and not just a school facility, you know, I, I know we've had a couple of, someone stopped me and saying they felt like they couldn't get into the, the new building, and so going forward, that's something I certainly want to pay attention to, and then just the last thing is, and this is, I guess, a, a, Jim Maloney, your clear spinner question, is are, are you watching, are socioeconomics beginning to change, do you see a marked change in these socioeconomics of our students?
So, there's, the question is, the change in socioeconomics, there's been a slight drift towards more full pay, not huge, we, one of the factors that addresses that change is the new policy, that kindergarten assignment numbers used to be K to eight socioeconomic status ratios plus or minus ten percent, now it's K to five enrollment plus or minus ten percent, weighted based upon the past few years, so it, at the low, at the K through five level, this year, I think the, for the lottery, we just ran the socioeconomic status, the high end for full J, I believe, can be seventy-two percent, which is significantly about seven percent higher than what it's been historically.
No.
That's the result of two factors, first, the change in the demographics, not huge, I mean, they're, Cambridge has certain, I think because of your affordable housing programs in Cambridge, there is a certain glue almost that helps protect that from going too low, but on the other end, as, as more people are entering the school who are full pay, there's not, there's not a limit on that, so the ratios can change.
Yeah.
It's not a significant one, in my opinion, but it's, it's growing, it's trending definitely more full pay.
Right.
Isn't it the last three years of kindergarten, not K to five?
Well, I was just making a point, it.
I couldn't, I didn't hear you, what did you ask him?
Last three years.
Yeah, but the bottom line is, the K through five are, are in, in a gradual trend towards full pay.
Full pay.
So, and the lottery's actually done on the last three years of kindergarten only, with the idea that that more accurately reflects the kindergarten enrollment, not.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, I think also, to this point, again, if I missed this, if you look at our K, the, the K to five balancing is considerably easier right now because of the, it's, it's limited at K to five, the drift that you would see in the upper grades in a K to eight system has pretty much disappeared, there's some, some issues in the six through eight program that I think we need to pay attention to as a district, but in the K through five, there, the balancing has become easier, that, that trending towards certain K through eight schools that became higher paid in the middle school years, where the K eight has disappeared, although there's some signs that there, that it may be an issue in the six through eight in the future.
Okay, Mark.
I just, you know, when we think about those numbers and paid lunch and free and reduced lunch, let's, let's remember that the way we determine who has paid lunch and who has free and reduced lunch is with the federal guidelines for poverty, which are absolutely ridiculous for Cambridge, so.
Right.
If you're a family of four that makes twenty-four thousand dollars a year, you're not considered in poverty, and, you know, the group that we led said that you need to make a hundred and eight thousand dollars a year for a family of four to pay all their bills every month in Cambridge, so, you know, I think when we think about, when we say paid lunch, it conjures up these images of sort of wealthy families that, the reality is, is that the families that are free lunch are basically all public housing families. If you can afford rent in this city, you're not qualifying for free and reduced lunch in Cambridge.
But that doesn't mean.
And that doesn't mean that your, that doesn't mean that your family's making two hundred thousand dollars a year and can afford to give you all the things that we think you can, so there's a real, there's a huge gap between who is financially stable enough to do all the things we think paid lunch families can do and free and reduced lunch, and there's a lot of families that fall through that crack.
I, I just, I just raise it because as, as the city council side looks at the housing, our housing policies and what we're trying to do around housing, we might want to do that, with our eye toward trying to preserve our economic diversity as much as possible, and we have some control over that through our housing policies, was someone over here wanting to say something?
So why don't we put more kids on reduced lunch?
We can't just put them.
Well, one of the recommendations from, one of the recommendations from the committee, from the Income and Security Committee, was to look at using, keeping the, you know, for the school to, you know, if they want to keep, the school department wants to keep the free, the federal guidelines to determine placement, school placement, that's one thing, but in terms of free and reduced lunch, personally, I would love us to use a more accurate figure to Cambridge, that's money, and the question is, do we want to invest that money in it, but we have a lot of families that do not qualify for free and reduced lunch, but cannot afford, forget healthy, but cannot afford to give their kids breakfast and lunch every day, and although we never deny, the schools never deny anybody lunch, we do spend, and I'd be curious to this, the administrative cost of chasing families that owe four hundred dollars or five hundred dollars because their kid gets free lunch every day because they don't have the money, but they don't qualify for it, we spend time and energy, and we make people feel terrible because we chase them for four hundred bucks that they don't have, when we could just give the kid free lunch, what they're doing anyway, and absorb the cost somewhere else, that's my own little soapbox, I'll be quiet.
So, just why don't we use your numbers, the federal number, and how much would it cost if we did that?
I'll tell you what.
Easy, go ahead, Richard.
So, I, I think from, from running the school district, we, we are bound to this kind of federal criteria for other things, it sets up our Title I, it, it just sets up a lot of things, so that was a safe criteria, particularly, particularly as it pertains to being clean at least, Leland, so, you know, I don't think we have the, the leeway to say, okay.
Well, what you could do, what you could do is, and we.
Just give them the lunch, but we.
I did, I, I talked to them about this, what we could do, when you fill out your free and reduced lunch form, you have to put down what your income is, so it's an extra step, but when the school is getting those forms, the school could say, okay, this person is considered a free lunch student because.
By the federal.
By the federal guidelines, so they're, so they're going to be placed here or there, but their income is below, you, you could, you could do both things because you have the information, you could still use the federal, everyone has to fill out that form anyway. You could still use that form to determine school placement, but by looking at what the person's income is on that form, you could also then say, this person's going to get free lunch, you'd have to maybe change up some of the terms, but I didn't want to go there, but I just, I wanted to say about the demographics, we have a lot of people, a lot of kids in the city that are considered to be, their families are considered to be financially stable and they're far from it.
Well, so, can I just follow up?
Can you get in a less word?
So, so why don't we, why don't we do that, and how much would that, because I think this, this is, you know, we're all together in talking free budget, but how much would that cost?
We talked seven hundred grand, I think we talked about.
So, I mean, there's, I think it's important to, first of all, recognize what we do already.
Yeah.
Right now, Cambridge, unlike a great many communities in Massachusetts, subsidizes our lunch programs to two and a half, almost nine hundred dollars all the year, and most districts in the state are in great many of them, school lunches are paid entirely by federal receipts for those who can't pay or pay a reduced number, and the, those that can pay.
Mm-hmm.
In Cambridge, for a variety of reasons, not the least of which is we have, I think, a very broad, healthy menu system, that includes various types of ethnic food, vegan selections, vegetarian, again, it's a very, it's, it's not your, it's not my mother's.
I was going to say.
Not a lot of chicken pucks being served.
So I think it's important to remember that, second of all, for us to go to a universal free lunch is probably between half a million and seven hundred thousand dollars a year, we, we don't.
In addition.
Additional, in addition, and we don't, I have to say, we don't spend, we don't spend a lot of time chasing people, we could reduce staff, we have cashiers, we could do away with cashiers, et cetera, in schools that would have offsetting savings if we spent that much, but it's relatively small.
Jim, no one's going to bring that motion in, you know, no one's going to bring that motion.
We don't want to get rid of the cashiers, we'll have to do something else, but.
Fred will get rid of it.
Yeah, but I, I, you know, we've had, we've had some of these conversations already.
So, so thank you for that report, and, and, you know, some of the, what came back from that is to hear back from you in maybe this kind of format, where we are with the schools going forward, particularly as, as it pertains to, will the administration be able to occupy the Cambridge D building or not? Okay, so we've moved to the second part of the agenda, and we have another hour, you don't have to feel compelled to stay for that, no, you do have to feel compelled to stay, but we don't have to talk ourselves to that hour, but I wanted to, to give ourselves an opportunity to just talk about our shared agenda and what we want to discuss over the next several months, the city council recently amended its rules to allow for, I think, six, four, three, more?
Three more.
Three.
More, yeah.
I think, okay, more opportunities for the school committee and the city council to meet, and the, and the school committee already has three on, in their, in their rules, and so how do we best use these opportunities to talk about our, our shared agendas, I mean, we each, I thank each of you for signing up to serve the citizens, whether we're on the school committee or on the city council, and we do have shared areas, and so how do we, and what do we want to spend our workshop, roundtable time, talking on and working through, again, our collaboration is something that we owe to the residents and the constituents of our city, so when I went down my list of, of, I, I. So, when I went down my list of, of, I, I, I think you have it, the list of what I thought were some of the shared areas, I mean, the budget, early childhood education, universal pre-K, charter schools, and char, you know, we just spent almost fifteen minutes of school committee, city council meeting talking about charter schools, STEAM, STEM mitigation funds, how it affects our schools, cultural efficiency, school climate, family engagement, after-school programs slash community schools, school facilities, world language instruction, poverty and homelessness, office of college success, internet threats, swatting, Indigenous People Days, just some of the things that I came up with. I don't know if there's other things that you want to put on this list, but this is our opportunity to think through, or give me and the vice man, vice chairman, direction around what we want to talk to in this roundtable setting. Counselor Chung, Ms. Bowman, Ms. Nolan.
Well, so now I want to add, talk about adding seven hundred thousand to the meal budget, to add to the nine hundred thousand, just to do universal lunch. I'd be open to that going forward. I would love to, going forward, talk about universal pre-K and early childhood education. I think that was quite, oh, I was just giving my list of what.
Yeah, I'm trying to write it down, so, save the way we can get it.
I've been expressed by frustration pretty vocally about, you know, the, the pace of which things are proceeding, although I like the ideas that are coming out of the task force and the plan going forward, but, you know, we already do pre-K, and very well, between special start and Fletcher-Mater and Tobin School, I think this city already knows how to deliver a really quality, high-quality pre-K education. I'd just like to, let's just blow it out, and let's double down on that. I think STEM and STEAM is an ongoing conversation, other people will probably talk about some more. I also am very interested in world language, having an update just for what's going on with the, you know, Chinese especially, but thinking about how can we continue to expand language opportunities across the district and across grades. And then, very interested recently with all the news about internet threats and swatting, and the idea that someone can, India can just email in a bomb threat, and we have to just mobilize and respond, just, I don't know how we, how we cope in that kind of reality. So, those are things that are just top of mind for me. Thank you.
Okay. Floor's open. Oh, I do have a batting order. Ms. Bowman, and then Ms. Nolan.
I would like to add to the conversation of workforce housing, because we have tons of educators that cannot afford to live in our city. We know that housing is a huge issue, but I would like to have the conversation from the perspective of our teachers. And so, I would like to have that added to the conversation and the agenda.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you. I think all of these issues are worthy, appropriate, they're all important. However, I don't, I, I don't think, obviously, as you said, we'd get through all of them in depth. So, I put the three top that I think are the most appropriate for the joint body.
Mm-hmm.
Um, early childhood education, universal pre-K, and I see that very much as a mix. While we do some things well, I feel like the city and the existing childcare providers in the city already do such a great job, and in some ways frankly, better than the school department. I would really want this to be joint, not all thrust on the school department. Also frankly, I feel like we have so much on our plate already. I don't want this to be, well, you guys fix it, you're already in education, you do all the pre-K and preschool, because I feel like, you know, we still have to frankly work for our middle schools to be better, because that's where we're, we continue to lose, lose people. But I think it's a key, key issue. The second is on this after-school program and community schools. Again, that's something that is already a blend, it's totally appropriate.
Mm-hmm.
And family engagement. Again, those are the ones I see of that list that are most amenable to a joint workforce from the two bodies to work together. I, I would never not want to address.
Say something before family engagement, I didn't get it.
Oh, say something before family engagement?
Before.
Oh, is after-school programs in community schools, so that after-school space, the out-of-school time, which I would probably broaden that to be not just after-school, but maybe out-of-school time.
Okay.
Which includes the summer.
Sure.
And, and I think for instance, poverty, homeless, I think they should be part of every one of those conversations, so that, you know, that, that affects early childhood, that affects after-school, that affects family engagement. So, but, but in terms of the top three on your list, those are ones that I, popped out to me as the most urgent for us to address, as a joint.
Okay.
Thank you.
I want to suggest two topics, one of which Ms. Nolan just touched on a little bit, and span, spanned a lot, and then add one other one that I've talked to. Couple of them is the school committee, but starting with the first one, around the out-of-school time. You know, there's a, there's a pretty interesting growing body of social science research right now around the idea of collective impact. And anyone can look this up, all you who search collective impact. And I know that, I forget the guy's name who came to that, that workshop that we had at, oh goodness, I want to say it was at the hotel, you know, and all the, all the OST providers were there, and there was a guest speaker, and.
Yeah, I don't remember his name.
I don't remember his name. But collective impact is really something that Cambridge is sort of on the verge of, but not all the way there. Collective impact really speaks to the idea of being really intentional and methodical about ways in which schools and municipal agencies collaborate to attend to the needs of kids. And, you know, sometimes, well, I've often said, the interesting thing about, about OST, out-of-school time, is in schools, we have the kids for six hours a day. And if we assume, just for the sake of keeping the math easy, even though I think it's not true, that they sleep for eight hours a day, that's fourteen, that leaves ten hours a day of whatever. And while I don't think that ten hours a day need to be rigorously scheduled, I think there's a lot to be said for free time and having fun and the rest of it, there is something to be said about being even more methodical and intentional around the kinds of opportunities that we can plan and the ways in which the city and schools can collaborate. Collective impact, as a, as I say, as a research item, offers us a pretty interesting framework to approach that, so I just want to put that out there to second what's on here already.
Mm-hmm.
The other one that's not really explicitly mentioned on here, although facilities might incorporate, is something that the manager kind of alluded to at the very beginning, which is around safety and security. So, we've had some difficult times here in the last year or so around safety and security. And I think there is a capital element to this, and you just referred to that, Ms. Rossi, around, you know, whether it's around these cameras, whether it's around these swipe cards, or locking doors, or, you know, all that kind of stuff that's associated with safety and security. And there's an, obviously, a very important role for our city partners here, particularly the police department, but limited to the police department, in ways in which we can best use our SROs or other individuals to support a work. I think in the crisis moments, I'm thinking back to some of those phone calls, when I was talking to you at two in the morning.
Yeah.
Right, with, with you, Ellen, and Bob Oz and Tim Maloney and others, when we were having all of those bomb threats. But I think stepping back and thinking about safety and security is a very powerful and important issue for the city to take on, and it's one in which the natural tendency for cities and schools to collaborate is right there in front of us. There are challenges with this, right, which have to do with the cultural challenge, where, and I know Jim has spoken about this, which I think is maybe the hardest part of it. It's pretty easy to go out and buy the, I mean, the money's there, go out and buy the key swipes. What's harder is to try to educate folks around what kind of, what kind of buildings do we want our schools to be? Should they be the warm, open, nurturing environments that people are free to come and go as they please, and feel like it's part of one big happy family? That's on one end of the continuum. The other end of the continuum is, should they be fortresses, right, where, you know, everyone needs a key, or an ID, or, you know, a thumbprint, or whatever, to, to enter, and there's a police officer. Well, probably we don't want either of those extremes, but wherever we sit in the middle seems to me to be a very, very important, important discussion to be had, because all it takes is for one terrible thing to happen, and we'll regret not having had this, this plan in place.
Thank you. Others?
I just wanted to add to this, when I look at this list, it feels like it leans more towards what's happening in our school system. And I, if we're going to convene as a joint body between the two, I really think we have to elevate the conversation a bit, to how are we developing a city in a way that keep, that, that creates an intersectionality between these two bodies that allows us to benefit each other? So, case in point, we started a conversation earlier today about North Point and L-Wide. So, if we can start thinking about planning in the concept of a community approach, which includes, of course, more development, but what does development look like? There's a profit sector aspect to it, but there's a public sector aspect to it, and start thinking that way, I think it would, I think that would be a more beneficial way to approach these two bodies coming together, because right now, this feels like just a list of the things that we discuss as a body on the school committee side, but there has to be a, a joint approach.
Actually, it's sort of some of the things that either one, either one or the other body does or is impacted by. This is my list, I will own it, but it was something to give us, something to start thinking from, as opposed to giving you a blank slate. So, this is not, this is Denise's list, I throw it out there, you can throw it away and start anew, but it was just something to get the brain percolating, so, thank you. But I just want to make sure I don't, I'm not locked into any of this, but I wanted us to kind of think about what was there. Richie, sorry, hand somewhere. Oh, okay.
So, three, Madam Chair, I think this is exactly what the citywide planning is about. And I really urge the schools to be, you know, really involved in that process, and, you know, whether it's a school committee member or a couple of them, members of the administration, who need to be focused in on winning that school story, fully all kinds of things, and that's how we're going to get the better conversation. And all those things are going to be discussed.
Dennis, then Mark, and then Patty.
I was just gonna say the same thing. The vision plan opens the door. No, no, you did great, you did, I loved hearing it, Rich.
I was reading your notes, I was gonna say the same thing.
Still doing that?
Fred, what do you want me to write down there? But I, I appreciate the comment, because that's what we're all about, is building community. We might, our emphasis might be in different places during the day, but at night, it's all that, it's all where, how people come together. And, well, I could talk a lot about this, but I won't, given the amount of time that's left. But I, I totally agree, the opportunities are huge, but every urban design plan that the city has has to focus on community. And the successes, like, at least what I saw the first time going through the MLK school, it felt like community. And you don't always see that in public buildings these days. So, congratulations on that. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
I would just say, just real quickly on that, I mean, I would, I would suggest that the consultants meet specifically with the, with folks from the schools in a separate, I mean, they should go to the public meetings as well, but public meetings are often, the public is there, they want to speak, we try to not dominate that conversation, but I think, let's make, you know, let's make sure that there's a special opportunity, and, and to what, you know, what Monika said, I mean, I certainly don't want to speak for the school committee, but, you know, having done both, these kind of roundtables always felt for, to me, when I was on the school committee, that it was very heavy on, what did the city council want to know from the schools, and what was the critique of the schools from the city council, where I think, you're right, where there has to be some way where the, the decisions that we make on the council about affordable housing impact what happened on the schools. And so, the, the topics really have to be balanced, and I wonder what, but we don't have to, oh, we don't have to talk about everything in a roundtable, so I wonder what, what other ways we can share information about what is, I mean, we can certainly, I could go to a school committee meeting, and, and go to those meetings as well, and sit in the audience, and you guys can come every Monday night, but short of that, because we all, that's unrealistic, what are some other ways that we can?
And that just allows a conversation.
What are some other ways we can share information back and forth between what's, what are the initiatives with the schools, and what are the initiatives or the topics being discussed from the city, that doesn't take a formal roundtable to have that conversation? Because some of it is just, I just want an update, you know, what's going on with, you know, I mean, you could take any, you know, what, what are you guys doing about school climate? That doesn't have to be a, sure, I have my thoughts, but that's your stuff, right? And we have to also trust each other to deal with staying in our lanes a little bit. But what, what are some other ways we can exchange information that isn't a formal meeting? Because we're just not going to have enough time to touch on everything.
And, and that's a good point. I mean, I'm interested in hearing people's thoughts, I mean, we always, we have, we are a little, we are bound in some way by the open meeting law and, and forum, and so, we have to keep it in that context, but there are workshops, there's retreats, there's a few other kinds of ways. And I'm interested if people know about the ways that we could sort of get together informally or formally, I'm open to that. The idea is trying to build a collegial relationship, so we're, we're asking and exchanging information from both parties. At the end of the day, it's all our city. Richard, and then Fred.
So, I, I think some of the stuff, Madam Mayor, your list wasn't that bad, I just want to let you know that.
Thank you, Richard.
Just, just to be clear, you did cover, you did cover a few things, I know that they're kind of.
Shoot the messenger, that's all.
Exactly. You're taking some shots over there.
Despite what Monika thinks, the list was pretty good.
So.
I had nothing to do with it.
Except, and I think you did.
It was Fred's list.
Right, right. I think you did do a, a good job, you covered a lot, and I think it's probably things that you've heard in your, kind of, in your space. So, some of the stuff is on there, particularly the easy ones, I think, which are early childhood, the STEM stuff, although I have to say, in the last two years, I really don't know what was really done on the city side, so we should think about how we re-engage.
And that is a question, where is STEAM and STEM? I don't know.
They're, they're somewhere in the atmosphere, probably close to Kendall Square, I'm sure, but, but the truth is, you know, I don't know exactly where we are on either side, so it's sort of re-engage in that conversation that was on your list. I would add just a couple other things. I mean, I think what Monika was talking about was really thinking about this from the perspective of complete cities, which, as Counselor Cologne said, you know, you're always, at every turn, you're thinking about community and how everything affects, with, you know, sort of the pros and cons of each of the policies and things that happen on either side of the aisle. I think that, you know, being a little broader around some of those issues like employment and employability, which kind of links to office of college success and other things, and even some of our young people who don't do fair so well after they leave this building and other, you know, the charter schools in the city, and even coming back from the community colleges. I think the affordable housing issue is one we've always dealt with, whether it be for the professionals and just the families who are being squeezed out, even though we're doing our best job, you know, it's not always the case where they can live in some of these new places, whether it's the lottery or other things. I think it just poses a threat in some ways to our families, or at least the traditional families that we know, and I, I don't want to indict the new people that move in, however they land here, but there's definitely a group of folks that are in our schools that are, you know, they feel that they're being threatened, quite frankly, by the climate in the city around the affordability, and how their, their economic security is or not in this time as we move forward. I think for me, two big things that we should try to inject into the conversation are mental health and sort of trauma, that stuff. I'm seeing it a lot from my public health lens, that, you know, this is a big deal, whether it be the parents or even children, just the whole group of individuals that are in the margins around this particular issue. The opioid crisis, which I think affects us down the line, and we buried some of our sort of graduates or alum from this school, and we're doing it much too frequently for my stomach, and I'm sure yours, but I think injecting that into the conversation so we can figure out how we can do a better job at keeping it on the radar, thinking about where the intersection between the school and that population as people mature through our system, you know, getting people help. I can tell you in the pro, one of the programs I run that some of the counselors, and I know Ms. Devereaux was at, our graduation last week, there are a lot of kids who, their issues start when they're, quite frankly, in high school. You know, they have a hockey injury, and they're on pills, and, you know, four years later, they become the statistic that we read about, that we, you know, that kid was, you know, I remember him as a great goalie, a great football player, whatever it is, those problems aren't starting when those kids are twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, by and large. You have this group that, you know, for whatever reason, no one's fault, they just get caught You have this group that, you know, for whatever reason, no one's fault, they just get caught up a little earlier and they end up on our sort of radar, when maybe it's too late or later than we would expect. So, I think those are two issues we should try to figure on. I don't know how we would incorporate it into the conversation, but if you're asking, those would be two of mine. Then I think there's sort of bigger ones that we, that have challenged us for years, the race and class issues, and even the culture. I mean, you know, that stuff is, is still real and relevant in our city. I think that oftentimes, we try to do the right thing, but we don't necessarily land there every time. And, you know, one of the things that was unfortunate about, in my opinion, this last election cycle is that these things were coming out in different spaces, and I think that many people talked a lot about this stuff in many different sort of silos, but I don't know, we've had that conversation amongst the leaders, and I think if we're going to lead, we have to force that conversation in some ways and understand that it's going to be difficult, and understand that it's going to be necessary. And then the last thing, I think, which really is kind of what I thought we'd be trying to do, is think about the relationship of the two bodies and how we're going to coexist and work, particularly in this moment where these two fearless gentlemen are leaving, Mr. Rossi and, and our superintendent, because, you know, while they shared a good relationship, there's no guarantee unless Ms. Peterson is going to be the person on the other side, that we're going to have leaders who think like and cooperate like these two gentlemen have over the last couple of years. And I think that's important, because, you know, when you move at the pace that our city moves, you have to have these decision makers understanding each other's, what they need to be successful and how to make sure that the bodies respectively, that they're speaking to, in Mr. Rossi's case, the city council, in the superintendent's case, the school committee, how they can have that collegial respectful relationship where you, you, you think about, as Mr. Cologne said and Monika said, that you're thinking about the whole city all the time when you're engaging in these very high-level conversations. And if that respect and relationship isn't there, and, you know, Lord knows what an international search brings you. I mean, in Cambridge, you can get international search and you can find the person that lifts three doors down. I mean, that's just how it works sometimes. So, we don't know what we're going to get on your side. We know we have a new incoming superintendent, who I'd like to protect to some degree, when they, when he engages with the, whoever the new people on the city side. But I think that's important, to think about the relationship both of the electeds across the aisle, and then of the sort of CEOs who run the ships respectively.
Thank you.
I heard they just arm wrestle. And that's how everything...
I've seen Kenny Salim's arms, I don't know, he might be in trouble.
Shut up, shut up, okay. So, we get Fred, Emily, Kathleen, David.
I just wanted to say to Mr. Harding, I know that Richie and Jeff Lee, but I'm staying, Mr. Harding, so if that gives you any solace...
Till you go.
Sleep better now.
Thank you.
We won't lose a wink, Fred, we won't lose a wink.
So, my, I'll just, I, I think the joint committee idea that we both work together is a great idea, and we should pursue that. And I'll just mention two things. The Office of College Success, I've been really pleased with its, how it's unfolding, and I think that's important, that we need to work together on that and make it more public. The most, I think the most of us know the most important measurement we can have is when our kids are out of high school for six years, or they succeeding in graduating from college and going into a career. I mean, that's, that's the final ultimate measure of how successful a school system is, so I think we need to, we need to work on that, we need to make that more public. And I think, quite honestly, you know, I, I actually believe that a lot of kids don't finish college for as small of reasons as that, that they can't afford a bus pass. I think it's as small as that that can, that can make the difference for the first time. Student going, a college-going student can't, can't continue his college education, and so, you know, when you think of it, on June 10th, when they graduate from high school, and then after receiving all kinds of support, all kinds of care, and that just all comes to an end abruptly, you know, and so, we as a city, you know, and, you know, we as a city needs to be, needs to be, do more about that and to, and to, and to help these kids along. I mean, if you go to, if you go to Bunk Hill Community College and you take two remediation courses, you pay for those courses, so when your Pell Grant runs out, you've got to pay for those other courses, you don't have the money to pay for those courses. So, there are a thousand ways, if your car breaks down and you can't go to college and you've never had anyone go to college before, you just, you just don't go. If you get a college award letter that says you got a full boat scholarship, and you've got to respond by August 13th, and you've never read one of those before, you lose the full boat scholarship, which has happened in our school system. So, this is the stuff that we have to work together and put to an end, and really hit a home run on this, and I think that, I, I think that, I think the, the elements are in place to be very successful at this, and so I think this is a perfect place to do it. And then, the second one is the after-school programs and the community schools. As the after-school programs relate to the middle school programs, I think we've made progress on both ends. I'd like us to just reengage in that, from the standpoint of, we have a six-hour day, we probably need to, you know, the way that we need to extend that day is through things like after-school programs. And so, whether that's world languages, whether that's, you know, so, so many, so many other things that we can do in after-school programs. And I'd really like to see the after-school program for those teachers that work for the city side, that that be a pathway for those people to become teachers in our system. I think we need to marry those two elements in a way that is going to guarantee success for, for our schools, so. And I, and I, and I think the emotional, you know, the social and emotional issues, I think the after-school program can add great, great, great strength to that, so those are just two, two ideas.
Thanks, Fred. Emily?
Two issues. One is attendance and absences issue. This probably goes along with poverty and homelessness and mental health and all the other things, but there are some kids who are missing several weeks of school every year. Ellen and I have spoken about that once or twice. And the other one is civics education and civics engagement. Even something simple is making sure every child in U.S. history goes to a city council meeting or some way to connect what's happening between the schools, what's happening.
We want to encourage them, Emily.
Or me?
We want to encourage them.
You don't want to?
We want to.
That's what I mean.
Okay.
Oh, so don't tell them.
Because people want to have that.
I think the city council too, I think, I think that's a good idea.
All these things, because we're developing leaders, not just workers, not just college students.
Thank you. Kathleen?
So, for me, I think it's really looking at how we do the zero through college for all our students and all our families. And so, it's all the different ways that the city program intercepts with the schools. And then, having those programs reinforce each other, and some of the softer subjects, I think, that we talked about here, with the family engagement, with the cultural proficiency, with the school climate, that we're in the same place in the city programs that we are in the school programs, so that it develops those relationships and extends them. Because at times, the out-of, the out-of-school time programs actually have a closer relationship to many of the families than the schools do, so how can they help us connect the families then with the schools, are things that I think about looking at. And, so, that's, those are primary issues for me. The other issue for me is when we're talking about housing in the city, the way that that influences our control choice program. And a big question for me has always been, what is the housing policy in the city? And we have a policy around control choice, and are they working together, or are they working at cross purposes?
Okay, thank you. David?
You know, I, I, I think sometimes, I think that we just have to almost pause a little bit and make sure that we're working with current information. Having been on both bodies and having cheered both bodies, I think a lot of times, and it's, and I'm not saying this is an insult to folks, but I think, I think there are people that think they have the information, and a lot of times, the information that they have is old information. So, sometimes I think you have to almost pause and kind of catch people up in a way. And I think, and when I, you know, I'm just thinking about the school department in a, in a way, some of the issues, you know, the level-two schools, the level-three schools, and kind of talking, I'm not sure everybody is on the same page and understands the, where we were, where we are type of situation. I think the challenges around security are a big issue. I think what you just said about, about the housing issue, I think the committee, I think the councilors talked a lot about who is going into apartments and who is it serving. And then, when Monika talked about kind of the workforce, we kind of have that, and we, we don't have it for families necessarily, but for a young teacher coming into the system, quite honestly, they could probably get an apartment in Cambridge with a two- or three-month wait right now. And I'm not sure that, that you folks know that, what we know, so sometimes, the information's floating around, we think you know it, and you think we know it, and I don't think people really are necessarily on the same page. And it may mean just kind of taking a year in review once in a while, and just kind of going through, and not feeling embarrassed that we don't, might not know the facts in a way. And, you know, Fred talked about the whole issue of, and it's an emerging issue, it's an issue that, on the school department's side, more and more attention is, is given to it, but the whole issue of social, emotional issues facing teachers today, facing kids today, and, and we are fooling ourselves if we don't think that that goes right into Ellen's area, and it goes into the playing fields, and it goes into every single aspect of a child's life and a family's life. So, I, I think there are lots of, and I also think that the issue that you talked about, I think it was the superintendent that talked about the, the whole issue of security and how that weighs on families, and how it weighs on kids. And, and we think we're communicating sometimes, maybe we're not doing it in the best way, but, so, I, I almost think before you can tackle the list, I almost think you have to catch people up where we are currently.
And all these areas, and all these...
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I have Craig, then Richie, I'll come right around. Craig, Richie, Nadine.
Thanks, everyone, for coming. This is a real brain dump. I would suggest that the mayor periodically hosts social events, the forum, at the office with coffee, donuts, bagels, whatever, with an expectation that over time, we'll build the personal relationships that I think would help us have a better professional relationship.
Thank you, Craig. Richie?
I was going to say that I think this is one of the best...
You was going to say you're going to pay?
Yeah, for the bagels, sure. It might be day old, but this is one of the best discussions that I have sat through between the school committee and the city council in a long time. And I think, going to where David was going, and what Denise is trying to do here, is to say, these are the issues that are before us, right? It's tough to come to a meeting and debate, we have to have this, no, we don't, yes, we do. This should be first. I think understanding all the issues, and then almost going through a prioritization of what are the most important ones, what are the realistic ones that we can tackle. I think, you know, from the administration of the city to the administration of the schools, we have great pairing. Ellen and Carolyn have worked together for years, Louis and Jimmy and Claire and Lisa and Gina have worked together for years, they pay respect for each other. I think the message that all of you send, not only to us but to the community, about this is how we're going to move forward, is such an important one. These are tough issues. These don't get solved in a one-two-hour meeting, once a quarter. These are really tough issues. Figuring out what information you need to get, what's the priority and what's attackable one at a time, I think is, is the way to go. I'm, I'm really impressed with tonight, I think this is a good meeting.
Thank you.
Nadine?
Thanks, Mayor Simmons. So, I, I want to echo some of the other issues others have brought up, and just maybe put a slightly different perspective on some of them. But I think the most, maybe the prime and most important thing that Richard Harding brought up is the race-class issue. It's, I mean, it's just really blatantly obvious in, in today's America, and especially here in Cambridge, that if you're of a certain class, you really just aren't going to have the same opportunities. It's a very direct correlation. It's something we've got to be talking about a certain percentage of the time, I feel, both in council and in, in school committee, and I'm sure you already do on school committee, but, but there's ways to attack this problem that have been undertaken throughout the world. There, these are known issues, and equity projects often relate to things that are already on the list, like family engagement and out-of-school time and that type of thing. And I think to the extent that we actually have maybe a medium-to-longer-term program, a five- or 10-year plan, we may be able to actually, I know we already seek to mitigate these things, but it's a losing battle so far, to be totally honest. The other thing is that, you know, as I think about the future of education, on a 20-year timescale or 10-year timescale, will, will education exist in buildings, in infrastructure, with the same expenditures in the same way in 10 years? Maybe. Will it exist in the same way in 20 years? Definitely not. And, and so, if there's some kind, that's 10, that's 10 reelection cycles, right? That's, that's, you can feel how long, that it's not that long, it goes quickly. So, how, how, like, how do we actually imagine as a group, how we ought to budget, how we ought to plan, how we ought to invest for the longer term? And it's, it's totally reasonable to be making large-scale bond and out investments today that last for 30 years, but will it be as reasonable four years from now? I'm not sure. Real engagement for me, as I said, underlies a lot of, a lot of these things. Real engagement is hard, real engagement is really hard. I don't think it's something that any of us have probably perfected, and there may be some, some glints of hope around the table, but, but problem-solving and debugging how real engagement happens and how the most, the families in most need of, of that engagement and of a helping hand until there's more traction, I think that'll, that'll be the panacea for a lot of these other problems. And then, lastly, budget, I just think in general, a zero-based budgeting approach where you start from, from scratch, every, however long, maybe it's every 10 years, maybe it's every 20 years, maybe it's every five years, but, but to do incremental budgeting often leaves decision-makers like us without the latitude we need to really plan in the long term. And I don't know when it is that this collective body will want to start over, but it, we should set a time, and it probably won't be in my tenure as a, as a policymaker, but it may be in yours, and, and I, I, I feel that we should probably look forward to that time.
Thanks. Ken?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and it certainly has been a very interesting discussion, many issues that we have talked about. It seems to me the common thread is, is a lot that really isn't, that's not education-related, while what's, you know, the teacher in the classroom with their teaching versus all the other myriad forms outside that these kids are bringing into the thing, and how we expect our public school teachers to be able to, to address all that with support we're going to be giving them to, to deal with these issues. I mean, it's, it's massive, the things that we're talking about. The only, only thing I hear was about the civics education, adding that to the curriculum. Other than that, it's all, you know, different, a lot of luck on the plate, and, you know, and how do we support those teachers to deal with these issues? The two issues I wanted to bring up, and the first one, piggyback of, of Richard said about the opioid thing. I've talked to a lot of people in the building and outside, and they feel there's a real major issue with use of marijuana among our young students. We're going to be opening a medical marijuana facility, a couple blocks from this facility. It's probably going to be legalized come November on the ballot question. How do we say, you know, to these, especially the young kids, you know, this is not really a thing that you should be doing at, at your age, so, I mean, that's going to be another issue, I think, you know, that the schools have to be, be dealing with, and, and how do we address that? The race-class issue, you know, most parents, you know, they're working two or three jobs, working fast, and they, a lot don't speak English, so how do, how do we engage them? You know, it's always the squeaky wheel that's, you know, sort of gets the juice, and, and, you know, so how do we engage those, those parents and those families? They're all working constantly, you know, but they send their kid to us every day expecting that we're going to be there for the, for those, those children. And the other issue, and I know, Madam Mayor, you said that tragedy gives you an opportunity, is the issue of bullying, and I know we've talked about that, if that is an issue in the schools, and are we looking, looking at that? But these are all issues that really, you know, the teacher that's coming in to teach history now is dealing with all these other issues that are coming in, you know, it's, I, you know, what's the teachers, and how they're going to address all these, that we're putting out there for them to, to address, and when the scores aren't exactly what they should be, everybody's criticizing, but it's, it's a massive undercurrent, and unfortunately, on the federal level, we're not going to get much assistance and stuff, but, so, it's, it's a challenge for all of us, there's no question, and I'm somewhat fearful about how we, how we manage that, but definitely, you know, I don't know if anyone's a teacher anymore, but, I mean, they, they have their hands full, and what do we expect from them? And, and are we going to burn them out, you know, after a couple of years, you know? A lot of us, when we, in the system, you know, those teachers were there for like 50 years, and they knew everybody coming into the system, those families, and there was a connection. I just don't, we see that anymore with the teach, you know, a lot of these young teachers, that, you know, how long are they here? I don't know if there's any stats on that, but, you know, at what point do we demand or expect a bunch of them that they naturally going to get burned out? That's my few things to bring up.
Okay, thank you. Patty was ahead of you in that, to Matty, I was...
A relatively quick thing, I want to echo what others have said, or ditto, or whatever. One question maybe to you, Madam Mayor, if you and the vice mayor and the city and school department could weigh in on what successful examples there have been in the last 10 or 20 years of the joint, there's been a couple of joint task forces, there used to be the digital divide one that had the school and the city representatives from both, they did some good work. The early education task force, I think, had some representation from both. The kids council is something that has representation from both. So, if we could look to our own examples of what has been proven to be an effective way to actually move forward on many of these issues, I think would be useful for all of us, because we all, there's, there's energy among all of us to actually address, do whatever we can to move these forward. to actually move forward on many of these issues, I think would be useful for all of us because we all, there's, there's energy among all of us to actually address, do whatever we can to move these forward, to actually get something done, addressing many of these key issues we've identified. So I would, I would look to specifically have some, someone look back at what have been the most effective, talk to people involved, and then make sure that as we move forward, we incorporate those lessons into a way that we can work together, which might be a joint task force on each of the issues we pick up or something.
So I, I think that, um, and sorry to leave it out of my, my time earlier, but I think that in terms of sort of what we might be reporting back, I think it's critically important that the council in this case keeps the school committee abreast of what the developments are in the city manager search. Um, I, I just think that, and depending on where you're at, I think that you have a community on the edge, you have a community that is very interested in who the next person's gonna be. Um, I, I think for my money, I'm very, um, concerned that, and I don't know this, but that there may be a, a thought that, you know, in doing a search very internationally and very globally, that the most important thing, in my opinion, that one needs to know it to be the city manager is to understand the city, its people, and understand who it is that they're serving. And for me, um, and I'm just a little biased because I'm like from here, right? But, um, I think it's critically important that when you think about the next person that you're gonna bring on, um, you know, whoever that may be, that lucky person, they're inheriting a sort of great thing. A great thing that can be tuned, fine tuned and be better, I think we'd all agree, but let's not lose sight on the fact that we are probably one of the best run cities in America. And so, and, and all of the things that aren't perfect about us, I think that we have the intellectual power and the, um, sense of pride to get us there. So I, I just wanna make sure that, and that's my own sort of hesitance on that whole process, but I do think that it can easily be lost when you get into these processes, particularly if you are putting yourself in the stead that we need to have somebody who's new and from somewhere else to kinda inject their, whatever their magic is that they bring here. Um, and so I think for my money, it would be good that the council, or whoever, is pretty intentional about keeping the committee abreast on how that process is going, you know, maybe even have a conversation on what the thoughts are around who the new person is. I know sometimes you, you have these opportunities to do it. I had one just recently when we brought a new superintendent on, although it's at a different scale, I think being a part of that gave me a lot of, um, a better understanding, quite frankly, of who we needed for the time and what that person ought to look like in the moment, along with some of the other members who served on that committee with me. But I, I don't want that to get lost on the council members as they go into their deliberations and thinking about how they bring on this new person. It is critically important that you understand and know this city. One thing that's great about this city is more likely than not, the people are making the decisions for you, they actually know and understand you in a way that you don't see in other places just because of, um, the way the communities are less connected. So that, I just, I know that wasn't on the list, but I think that might be a good.
The idea is to get it all out and.
Yeah, but I think that one is.
Get it out and we'll figure it out.
Right, and just to kind of, when you're talking about reporting back, sometimes we could lose, kinda just 'cause everybody's busy, we might not be as lock and step with you, and obviously you'll make the decision collectively, but I think it's just a good, good thing.
Okay, we're gonna go to Jan, then Mark and to David, and then Emily.
Thank you. Yeah, this has been a very interesting conversation. I, I do wanna put in a vote for what it's worth to really try to focus on the early childhood program and issues, 'cause I think that is a natural point of collaboration. And I also just wanted to throw out there that, um, on a lot of these issues, we have, the council has committee hearings that are open to the public, um, and school committee members are obviously very welcome to come and provide a school focused perspective. So when we have a, a hearing on human services, there's a natural way that you guys would, you know, have valuable input, or civic immunity, or even housing, or when we're talking about the city manager search. And I'm assuming that that search will have a advisory committee composed of a few counselors because of the open meeting law, maybe our new school superintendent, maybe a, a school committee member or, you know, I mean, so there will certainly.
Excuse me.
I don't think there's any chance that the school perspective will be not heard in that process, but I think it's worth thinking about whether there are other opportunities for you to come and, and, you know, I'm perfectly willing to, to hear suggestions from any of you about committee hearings or topics that you would like brought, raised before because they impact, because they start in the schools or the impact of schools most directly.
Thank you.
Yeah, actually, Jan, you beat me to it, and I was gonna suggest something similar, that, you know, even when they're, even when each body is having a roundtable conversation, you know, maybe, you know, maybe the vice chair from the school committee comes and sits in on the roundtables that this council has, or, you know, I'll come in and sit in on the ones that, that you have. Um, you know, it might be a lot to have everybody come because then that dominates in a whole way, different way, but maybe there, there gotta be, there has to be other opportunities for us to at least connect, either through a, you know, a, a person or together. Um, and, and the committee meetings, you know, so actually May 11th, we're scheduling today, I don't, Annie was supposed to call the clerk's office, we're gonna do, uh, speaking of the opioid crisis in last term, Vice Mayor Benzine started, had a roundtable on the opioid crisis, but it was really, it was sort of a bigger picture conversation. We had folks from the state, you know, talking a lot about what that picture looked like. We're gonna be doing something May 11th, um, that's really much more geared towards Cambridge and Cambridge providers, so that, you know, somebody from the school department, the health alliance will be there, Department of Health, Human Resources, all the, you know, nonprofits, um, but we could have someone from the schools there, you know, as part of that conversation as well. But how do we, we just need to, we need to think that all the time, right? Like just, you know, how do we involve, you know, how do we involve the city in this? How do we involve the schools in this? And then, I'm sorry, and then just lastly, I would just say Patty, I think we all touched on this a little bit, and Patty mentioned that, about the issue around poverty being sort of a part of all of these conversations. And I've said it 100 times, you know, I think the schools are doing an incredible job, but, you know, you could have the best teachers and the best facilities and the best policies and the best curriculum, but if kids are still going home to situations where they're not being fed consistently, they're not, you know, their heat's off, that, you know, they're, they're, you know, they're living in a very crowded apartment, they don't have a solid early childhood education, the schools are just putting Band-Aids on things that are much larger social issues, and that's where we have to really, as a joint body, focus on, I think, 'cause I think that's the biggest thing.
Thank you. David?
Richard left the room, but I just wanted to say that, for the, for the other members, that this, the council is right now looking at the process that we're gonna use in the selection of a new city manager, and quite honestly, we're looking at the process that was used by the school committee the last time, because the school committee has developed a process and they've refined that process over the past several searches, and there has never been a search process for a city manager in this form of government. So this is the first time they're really doing a.
I hope you learned some lessons from our searches.
Well, I, I, I think we have, and I, and I think that there's no perfect search. Richard, I'm talking about your, what you're, the point that you made, and I will say that Fred did attend the meeting we had last week, and we're having another meeting on April 6th. We're in the very early stages, but developing the RFP, getting draft language out and, and.
The city manager?
For, for the search. And, and looking at kind of how the school committee did it with the search for the superintendent and adapting a citywide process for that. And, and I think that, I think we'll be able to do it, and I think that, knowing my colleagues, I, one thing that I can assure folks is that we have been very, very lucky in having Rich Rossi and Bob Healy for as long as we did, two people that were deeply, deeply committed to public education. And I think that there is not a shadow of a doubt in my mind that a major priority of the council is going to be finding a new city manager that is equally as committed to public education in this community. And I know that's not gonna be easy to find, because I think it was very unique to find, Bob was a former teacher, Rich had gone through the, the system here, you know, but we're, and we wanna be able to continue, and Louis and Gina are over there smiling, but we wanna continue the investment that the city has made in the public schools, in the capital program going forward, in making sure that that's not compromised in this transition, so.
Thank you, David. And I, I don't know, the school committee side knows, I, I think I'm correctly saying this, that I believe our police commissioner has given his notice, so we're in a lot of deep in transition. Emily and then Dennis.
Just a little bit from what Nadine was talking about in terms of envisioning what schools will be like, and I think several others have talked about, we need to have some kind of district plan to being compliant with DESE, but with a new superintendent coming forward, we would want to be making some type of five year plan for what our goals are. But I would like that, to do that jointly with the council, because I feel like you all are elected to sort of represent a larger perspective, a civic perspective and a city perspective, you understand where people are going when they leave our schools, et cetera. So I can envision a process of envisioning CPS, that we have council representatives and human services and other people thinking about where, where do we want to take our school system within the context of where our city is going.
Don't get carried away, Emily.
Dennis?
I would say get carried away, but I, I, I just wanted to mention that the Harrington School had its issues, but the Say Yes Education Program did follow the kids in school, through high school and after. And a guy named, a wonderful guy named Jose Rivero and Ann Larkin were the people that did that, and they, I was part of that program, and they were just remarkable, and a very high percentage of kids from a very tough background went on to college and graduated. So there might be some lessons there, and Ann is very open on that information. And I wanna concur with Jan and the others on early childhood education. I, like most of you, I am adamant that the move that the city is, is promoting is a great step forward and hopefully, um, that and learning about all the cultures. I'm not sure how much there is about cultural education. You probably do a lot of it, but I'm going off to Israel in a few weeks, and one of the thoughts is learning about each other's religion to help break barriers down, maybe it's even cultural as well, it's not, civics are important, don't, I, but learning about other cultures could be helpful in opening dialogue. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
That's a part of the body here.
I'm gonna have you bless us before we leave. I was wanting to say thank you. I think this was a really good meeting. It's, um, 7:33, so I do, I thank you everyone for your time, your treasure and your talent coming here this evening. This is a beginning. It's really about how do we develop this, this collaborative body? I'm gonna be very quick, because people have said, I, if I could have just a few more minutes of your, your time, I'll be very brief. Things that I did not put on, but I, that either heard that I want to just add. When we think about culture, I put down cultural proficiency. We talked about, it could be called race and class, it could be cultural competency. I think it should be a citywide conversation. We should look at both sides of the aisle, and I think we should start with us first. It starts from the top and it works its way down. We're not willing to do it, well, I don't know why we should expect anyone else to want to do it. I call it city climate. Communication, I will work with the vice chair and the vice mayor on, and with our secretary and clerk about trying to increase and better our communication between both bodies, um, sharing our information. The other two things that we should talk about, figure out a way to do this, and we haven't done this since the days of Burt Drew, we do not tell our story well at all.
Who's Burt Drew?
He used to be. He used to be a public relations person.
Oh, okay.
Oh, that Burt.
The, the, the school committee was on, I think, Newsweek as the best school committee in the country, and we haven't made that. I'm sure, I'm sure, okay, let's not get it, let's not get crazy. Okay, so I just wanna, I just wanted to say, to say that, you know, cultural competency, social emotional slash bullying. I looked at the school department side, and thank, for all of you that, your well wishes and condolences was wonderful, but, and I thank you for it. The long and the short of it is, I lost my niece because someone bullied her. And the school department had a position on it, but the city didn't have a position on it. So she went home and got, and was bullied and ended up shooting herself. And so it says to me, it's really re, it's reinvigorated or re, there's a word for it, I can't think of it right now, dedicated, committed myself to saying, it's not a conversation we can have in schools alone. It has to be a citywide conversation, 'cause that, that bullying leaves, and it's social, bullying, social emotional, but it leaves the school, it follows you home, it follows you to the after school, it follows you to your job, it follows you back home. When, 'cause when you feel there's no place that you can go, that that's your only option, then, then we are, it's a really sad day. And no, it wasn't Cambridge, Massachusetts, and I know we do a lot, but do we do enough? Because we all know of incidences of intolerance, or bullying, or just being mean and nasty, and where does it all start? So I really would like to see us have a conversation about not only having our schools safe, but our city safe for our children and our families. So the, those are some of the issues that I would like to talk, talk on. Again, I wanna thank everybody, this was a very good meeting, I look forward to going forward. Bagels and quiche at the mayor's office in a few weeks, Craig.
I think that is the most important thing we could do as two bodies.
Absolutely, so, um, on that, on a motion by Fred Fantini to adjourn this meeting, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much.